Third, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Melissa Merrill for the invocation.
Dearly Father, thank you so much for everyone being here tonight. We just ask for your wisdom and your guidance in all of the decisions we have before us as a county and as a body. And we just thank you for your blessings over Union County and all those that serve to take care of our constituents. And we just ask for you to be with us here tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names stating whether they are residents of Union County and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
Hello, I'm Dr. Amanda Stanford. I reside in Indian Trail and have done for 10 years. While I agree that traditional values... While I agree that traditional values are important, I want to point out that it seems odd to publicly commemorate the Constitution and the Bill of Rights while continuing to ignore the First Amendment in all of our public meetings, which states, "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion." On the same topic, when we legislate public money towards parents to give to religious schools, yes, that's their choice, but why is this choice even an option with public money? Realistically, there is no proof that private schools provide a better education than public schools, on average, because there is no oversight. There's little to no data on the subject, and if there's no oversight, again, are we really giving these children a sound education? Some are, I'm sure, but others are absolutely not. I have seen the outcome of this type of education in some of my college freshmen, and the level of ignorance of some of these students is disturbing. If all we have is anecdotal evidence, how can we in good conscience allow this lack of oversight to continue, especially in schools like Bible Baptist Tabernacle in Monroe, where pastors and school officials, I will add, such as Bobby Leonard, who has a documented history of covering up sexual abuse, has received more than $5 million in taxpayer money so far? Bills such as HB 823, the expansion of the voucher program, by 60 state legislators such as Dean Arp, Tim Moore, David Willis, and Mark Brody, who are up for reelection here in the fall locally, will damage children who have no other advocate but the public good. I care very much about the public good, even if my own children do not go to the school district, as I've mentioned before, and you seem to find very amusing, because I know, after nearly 20 years in education, that not all children have parents at home who care about them. They are, by definition, the least of them, and is it not who true religion teaches us to care for the least of them? If in North Carolina, we no longer care for children who have nothing, and we take away from them even more, and yet pray in this chamber, our prayers are impotent.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mayor David Cone.
I'm Mayor David Cone. I'm from Indian Trail, North Carolina. I'm the mayor of Indian Trail. So, anyway, I appreciate y'all having me today. I spoke here last meeting. I know you guys wish you could grant everybody's wish, that that would be a dream come true if we had all the money in the world and we could do everything that everybody really wanted us to do. I'm here tonight hoping you may be able to work out two important issues we have in Indian Trail. The first being clean drinking water for our Morris Park neighborhood. We have quite a few residents here again today from Morris Park. And what we need is, or what we have, is so many of these residents who live there have arsenic in their water. Some of them have double the amount that's legal or should be. So, we need clean drinking water. It's very high. Like I said, some is two times the acceptable level. We need to get their water clean. In the past, Indian Trail has chipped in half the cost to get a similar problem fixed in another neighborhood. Again, I'm hoping we can work this out. Next, we have the Heritage Neighborhood, a relatively new neighborhood, a 55 and over neighborhood, beautiful place. Many of the residents that live there, it's their last home because it is a 55 and over neighborhood. After moving in their dream home, they discovered a sewer smell, something we all know they shouldn't have to live with. Does it... Whose fault is it? I don't know that it really matters whose fault it is. We just need to fix it. You know, we... I always like to put myself in the position of if I lived there, if I had bad drinking water, or if I had a sewer smell where I lived, then I would hope that the county or the town I live in could do something about it and help me. Almost all these wonderful people are senior citizens. Some have fought for our country. Almost all have helped build our country into a better place for you, for me, for us, all of us. I'm asking you, please, find a way to give back to the folks that have done so much for us. If possible, go back, look at your budget. Maybe you can find something you can cut, change, put off till next year. They're asking for your help and our help. This is the time they need us. I believe, and I'm hoping, it's time we give back to them. They've earned our gratitude and our respect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Carolyn Burrows.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Burrows, and I live in the Alton Community. And I've been here, I've attended some meetings probably for the last year, and I've just been requesting that you reopen the short water line program for the south side of Union County. Because I have supplied some documents to you all, and I hope you read them. We've done the best we can to present our complaint, not a complaint, we just need the water. It's not that we're asking water to come down there. It's already there. We just want to hook up to it. So, I would ask you to please consider this at your next convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other speakers who wish to speak who have not signed up? The next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2025 proposed operating and capital budget. I will open the public hearing and recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So, again, tonight is the public hearing for the manager's recommended budget for FY 2025. I want to start off by saying, first off, this is a team effort. It may say that it's the manager's budget, and it is. It's my budget to recommend to the board. But it takes a lot of work from staff to put this together. I'm not sitting in a room by myself trying to come up with these numbers. We've got a lot of folks who are a lot smarter than I am who work on this, and they're the ones who really should be recognized. Our budget team, Blake Hart and his staff, and I've got a slide with their names, but they were integral in making sure that this budget was balanced, that it meets their needs, and it's what I feel comfortable in proposing to you. And then also our other departments, our Tax Office and our Finance Office and our management team, all work together in making this budget come to fruition. So, I want to recognize those folks first, not just me. It's a lot of other staff members working on this. So, good news. I am not recommending a tax rate increase in this year's budget. If you'll notice there, the tax rate is recommended to stay the same at 58.8 cents. That does not mean that we will not need to consider that in the future. We have explained to the board what we are faced with, with some of our debt challenges, and those are coming in 2026. Well, we will have to make some decisions about how we fund debt for some school bonds, for some SBCC bonds, and any other debt we may incur during that time, which will require a tax rate change. We've given you this sort of that information to show you what that impact will be in the future, but we're able to accommodate this budget this year without a tax rate change. Now, I will tell you that we had to get creative. There are things that we're doing in this budget that are a little outside the box. And again, I credit our staff for working on that and coming up with those items, but fortunately, we're not requesting a tax rate increase. Just to be aware, we're anticipating that we will have growth in our tax valuation of around 4.25%. That's good, reasonable growth. That means the penny value's a little over $4 million. That's, again, good growth. We've got it broken down here by different funds, and that's usually how it shows up on our tax bills. So, we've got a Union County General Fund tax rate, 16.32 cents. A debt fund, which is specific to general government, about 1.75 cents. And the Education Operation Fund, education includes South Piedmont, it includes Union County Public Schools, as well as the amount that we give to Union County Public Schools for charter schools. That's also included in that. And then you have an education debt fund, and you have an economic development debt fund. So, that's how those are all broken up to equal 58.8 cents.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Stop anytime you want to.
Thank you, Brian. Just for clarification purposes, if you can go back to the previous slide for education, just to make things abundantly clear, what that includes is public schools, correct?
That is correct.
So, charters are considered to be public, and then, of course, we've got UCPS, but that would not include any kind of funding for private schools, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, on that slide, the assumption of 4.25% increase in property values, what was the assumption for the current fiscal year, the last planning cycle?
If I'm not mistaken, that was around 3.5%?
4.5.
Oh, 4.5, I'm sorry. My mistake. It was 4.5% for this.
4.5.
4.5, my mistake. We anticipate, honestly, that we will actually do better than 4.25%. That is our conservative growth number, and we believe we will be realistic to be able to hit that number. But I appreciate you pointing that out.
Thank you.
So, some of the strategies and the challenges that we faced, we had to reduce our requests from our departments by nearly $1 million. We also included an additional hiring freeze for three months. Now, that doesn't include your sensitive positions, those that are really mandatory. We obviously try to hire those when necessary, but a hiring freeze for three months at least. We're using unassigned fund balance. That's our savings account. We're using a good bit of those funds to help with balancing the budget and some of the needs for our other partner agencies. We're taking what's called a holiday on our OPEB payment. Now, it doesn't mean we're not paying OPEB. We do. OPEB stands for your... That is your employment benefits for those that are retired, retiree employment benefits. So, we pay a cost for those retirees. That counts as a contribution to OPEB. But we also, in the past, have made a contribution to a fund that we hold for that. We are taking a holiday or a break from making that contribution to that fund, and we're using those dollars to help with our class and compensation study, as well as other items within our budget. We're also requesting increasing rates and fees. At our last meeting, Patrick gave a presentation on rates and fees that we have that we're going to be recommending some changes to. And again, many of those have not been changed for years, in some places decades. So, again, some rates and fees. And then, we are also doing an investment in a new group called our Strategy and Innovation Team. And that's... Our goal there is to use that new group to help us with identifying ways that we can be more efficient in the county. We can provide better ways to do our work and be more efficient and effective. Those are some of the highlights. One of the things that we're going to do for enhancing our public health and public safety, we are finishing out the hiring of the school resource officers. This should be the last five school resource officers that we need, unless, of course, someone's going to build a new elementary school I don't know about. But those should be the last five we need for a while, and that's been a long time coming. That has been an investment that this board has been willing to make and has seen that through to the end, so I'm excited about that. We're also continuing our relationship with Atrium. So, if you'll notice, Atrium had asked for us to consider extending the contract that we have with them and looking into ultimately a hybrid deployment model for how we provide EMS services. We will be starting down that path, working on a new contract with them, providing them with some additional funds for operations and some capital funds to help them with purchasing some ambulances, and then ultimately, the purchase of base stations or base for that hybrid deployment model. So, those are investments for public safety. Volunteer fire departments. Back several years ago, we created a, I would say it's innovative, in my opinion, an innovative approach to how we created tax districts for our fire departments, our volunteer fire departments. And Patrick was instrumental in working on that, and it really creates an urban-rural sort of divide. Urban, we create those districts where we fund 20% of their needs. For rural fire departments, we fund 40% of those needs, and that comes out of the general fund dollars. And then the tax dollars that are set for the tax rate specifically for those fire departments covers the rest of it. Due to our increase in costs that we've all seen, and fire departments are no different, they are... You're going to see that there will be increases in the tax rates for those fire departments. There's just no helping it. Costs for personnel, costs for equipment, just costs are going up. But fortunately, we've been able to maintain a very good rating for our fire departments around the county, and they were held flat last year. I do want to point that out, that those departments were held flat last year. Medical examiner's office. This is something I think has been very important. Sheriff's Office is excited about this. Obviously, we are as well. The General Assembly actually is giving us some funds to help cover that, a little over $20 million for investment for construction, as well as $2 million a year for the operation of that. We are working through the final approvals and all the different contracts and things that you have to do with the state to actually build the facility and operate it. But through that, we're going to hire an actual business manager to help with that, and then ultimately, we'll start staffing that and then start construction of an individual medical examiner's office at some point in the future. Our goal, hopefully, is to start slow and partner with Atrium, use some space at the hospital that we have here in Monroe. We will do autopsies and things through that area first, and then we'll expand to a medical examiner's office that we construct later in the future, once we've got all of that and all the details ironed out. So, that's an investment that we're excited about, and the state has actually put some money into that on our behalf. Yes, sir?
Brian, so the state money that has been afforded to us for this, is there any expiration as far as the capital funds that they're willing to supply us with?
Good question. So, obviously, they're not going to let us sit on $20 million there forever. As far as I know, there's no short-term expiration of those. The operational dollars are supposed to continue indefinitely. Now, it's a state budget. We can't guarantee that that will actually happen, but they're supposed to continue indefinitely, and that's $2 million right now.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Water and sewer, and the board had given us direction previously on this, so this is factored into this budget. There will be anticipated a 7.25% increase for water customers, and then separately, a 6% increase for sewer customers. This is really specific to the efficiency of the system. So, we're really not growing capacity specifically for sewer. This is not about growing sewer capacity, especially that 6%. Ultimately, at some point in the future, the board can consider that, but right now, this is really for projects that help the system continue to operate, make sure that we don't have sewer overflows, and that we can run the system appropriately. For water, there is an expansion built into that 7.25%. There is an expansion plan of the new, not new, the Catawba Regional Plant that we have, where we share that with Lancaster Water and Sewer District. It's anticipated in the next five-plus years, we will need an expansion to that, so we have to build up to that, make sure we can cover those costs. And so, the board recognized that, and that is built into that 7.25% rate increase for the water. I also want to talk about, and the mayor of Indian Trail brought this up, I do want to talk about a few things. Morris Park, what is not built into this budget, and the board will need to... If you have feedback or if you have things you want to do differently, you know, now's the time for us to talk about this, because ultimately, on June 17th, we'll be looking for the board to adopt a budget. If it's not this budget, a budget, whatever it is. Morris Park is not included in this budget. Neither is the short line program. The board gave us authorization to complete the FY 22 and the FY 23 short line programs, but there's no funding for '24, '25, or anything beyond that. If the board wishes to include funding in that, then we need to readdress that rate increase for water, because it's not factored in there to cover that, depending on the amount of funds that the board wants to put towards the actual short line program. In the past, you put $5 million. We can't accommodate $5 million without a rate change. If it's a lower amount, maybe we can absorb some, but certainly not 5 million, actually probably not even a million. But again, that is something that the board would need to give us some direction on. For Morris Park, if the board is interested in that project, my recommendation would be that we can do the design for that in-house and cover that cost in-house. Construction, however, we would not be able to cover that, but what we could do is push construction to the FY 26 budget. It will take time to go through design and permitting anyway, so if you push construction to the FY 26 budget, we can adjust the budget at that time for that project. And if you wish to consider short line at that time, you could also do that as well. So, that's a recommendation that if you wish to include Morris Park, I believe we can absorb that cost for design by doing it in-house and then do construction at a later date and budget for that at FY 26. So, just giving you that as an option for you to consider. All right.
Brian, do we have any initial estimates as to, you know, what that project would cost?
So, the original estimate for construction was about $760,000. Total cost at that time was around $1 million, a little over $1.1 million. That included easement acquisition and included design at that time, you know, all the costs that typically go into that. To be perfectly honest, that was almost a year ago. Costs have changed. We really don't... We haven't bid out the FY 22 short line program, so we don't know what those costs are going to come in at. It's anticipated that this project might be closer to 1.5 million by the time we get all those bids in. But originally, it was roughly $1 million, $1.1 million for the whole, everything, design, construction, easement, everything. That would put it at a, if you shared it, somewhere between a half... That would put it at a, if you shared it, somewhere between a half million, 600,000 per entity, if you were sharing those costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, investing in our employee, employees. We have talked a great deal about the class, compensation and classification study, and it took a while for us to get that done and get those results back in here. And, and I, I want to say that the board was, was, you were very supportive of allowing us to do a, an adjustment in this budget, in this fiscal year. We put $2 million, and the board agreed to putting that $2 million and making a Phase One adjustment to those employee salaries. And in this budget, there is a recommended $5 million for Phase Two of, an adjustment for employee salaries. But that's not enough, guys. I want y'all to understand that we cannot finish out the classification and compensation study with that amount. We're only about 63% completed of the whole study. And that's just because there's not enough funding to do this without the board considering a tax rate change. And I felt like that would not be something that you would support. And so it's not in this budget. But in the future, I think that's something we should explore, is what do we do to finish out that classification and compensation study? How do we accommodate if we can, and how much can we accommodate it? We want to make sure that we are competitive, that we're retaining good employees and we're attracting great employees to come and work for us. And so I'm, I'm letting you know, I think we've done what we can do with this current budget, but it's something that, that we need to think about for the FY26 budget. There are a couple of other things that we are recommending as well for, for employees. We're recommending an additional holiday for President's Day. We're also recommending a one-time longevity bonus. Now, what we, what we hope to do is be able to continue that longevity bonus in the future, and it become a regular payment that is going to employees. We can't say that today, because we're using some non-reoccurring dollars to cover those costs right now. But in FY26, we're hopeful that we can offer that as a reoccurring benefit, and we can build that into that budget. But just, those are things that we're recommending for the bu, for the budget, for employees and our investment in our employees. All right. Union County Public Schools. Public schools that made a request for their budget, and, and we have, we have been able to meet their entire budget request in this fiscal year. We've had to do it two ways, with growth, so with natural growth, we were able to give them some additional funds, or their tax rate, I should say, generated enough funds to, to help them with their request. And then also, we are recommending some of our unassigned fund balance to go towards covering the rest of their requests. Now, I, I need to make a correction, because what was sent out last week was a budget message that talked about $1.9 million in unassigned fund balance. And if you read the budget document, there was a reference to $3 million. Neither one of those are correct. The correct number is 2.2 million. That's what it takes to fund the entire budget request for Union County Public Schools. I, I, I want to point out that originally, in trying to work through this budget, we anticipated we would be using $3 million in unassigned fund balance, but that is because the growth number was less. So when we were able to actually generate more in growth funds, we were able to offset, which are reoccurring dollars, that's a benefit, those are reoccurring dollars, we were able to offset that by reducing our one-time, our non-reoccurring dollars from 3 million to 2.8 million. So I, I want to correct that there was some, some information out there that would lead people to believe that it was 3 million or 1.9 million. It's actually 2.2 million at this point in time. Okay. As I indicated before, charter school funding, that continues to go up every year. It's estimated at 14.2 million. That's a pass-through. Union County Public Schools, they don't know what that number's going to be. It comes to them, and they have to fund it. There's very little oversight that they get to have over where those dollars, how they're calculated, is simply something that they have to pay. So we, obviously, we're responsible for that, but it is, it is something that is a, a source of concern. And we've been able to also, as I indicate, meet the operating capital request from Union County Public Schools. Any questions on that item?
No. Question, Brian? So this 14.2 million for charter school funding, is that specific to the county, the state? Can you explain a little bit about where this pass-through money would be distributed?
That's, that's a good question, and I'll do the best I can, but the, the public schools folks will probably correct me. The way I'm understanding it is just that where, where a student from Union County attends, that charter school can request funding back. And that request goes to Union County Public Schools, and then those dollars are generated really based on the estimate that they give us, and then those funds are sent to those schools that request those dollars. Unfortunately, there's no way to track whether those students come back. So they may list them at the beginning that those students are there, and then at some point, they may come back to Union County Public Schools, and none of those dollars come back with those students. And, and there's really not a lot of oversight when it comes to that. And I may have said that incorrectly, and someone can correct me if they want to, but that's my understanding of it.
So theoretically, the funding per student could go to, you know?
It could go to Mecklenburg, it could go to the school in Mecklenburg County. It does not have to be a charter school in Union County. It can be a charter school in any county for that matter. Yep.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. So as part of education, we also fund South Piedmont Community College. They have their, a tax rate as well. So we're, we're recommending some additional operating funds for them, about, almost $475,000 on that, and then operating capital for their capital needs. It's also, I believe that you're aware that they have a bond referendum that we'll, we'll be selling those bonds for, so they passed. So the public voted in favor of that bond referendum. We will likely be going out sometime in the near future to sell those bonds, and then that will also have to be considered as far as a rate change in that FY26 year. That doesn't show here right now, because we haven't sold those bonds at this point in time. So as I mentioned before, next steps is a, hopefully, budget adoption on June 17th. That's what we have a plan for. There's some information there for the public, if they, if they want to find that budget document. And here's where I wanted to talk about the acknowledgements for all the different departments and staff that have been involved in this, and Blake's team there, all involved in this. That when, when I say all hands on deck, it is all hands on deck, would, you know, all the way from Mary down to Jody, they're, they're all working on the budget and trying to get that ready. We throw them a lot of curveballs during the year, and close to this time, where things have become flexible and fluid, and they really have to adjust. And I appreciate that, that they are working some long hours and making changes for us when we, when we ask them, so. And then, of course, you've got all the other departments that we work with, and, and, you know, they really do a great job in making sure the budget meets our needs. I did want to give some additional detail on just a few things. I talked about a few things. In your packets, it does break down some additional information if you have some questions. I'm not going to go over a lot here, just want to show you that we do show you some past history on this. Keep in mind, when you get to the Union County water slides, in the past, and I'll, I'll kind of show you this, let's go to, we actually operated a water and sewer district. And when we ordered, operated a water and sewer district in the past, this is the first year we have not operated a water and sewer district, there were transfers in and out to that water and sewer district that made things really complicated. And so the numbers look skewed, and they are, because of the way you have to report for a water and sewer district. So it's hard to compare apples to apples when you have to report a water and sewer district as well, and then you have, where you don't have a water and sewer district. So when you may look at those numbers for 2025, and at the end of 2024, this is the first year where I, we're going to be operating without a water and sewer district, and that's why those numbers may look significantly different. So if you have questions specifically about that, please don't hesitate to, to, you know, give me a call, and, and I'll be happy to go through that with you. But it, it does have some, you'll look at it, and so I'm, I'm not sure why those numbers are so different. I did want to talk a little bit about solid waste, because I didn't really talk much about solid waste. We are recommending some rate changes, and I know that Patrick talked to you about those in our previous meeting. And, and that's honestly, that's needed. That facility over there at, at Union County, solid waste has not been updated in a, in a long time. We are one of the landfills that is steadily used, especially for construction and debris market. We're heavily, heavily used. And, and I think that by raising those rates, we are still be competitive, but we'll be able to fund the things we need to do to, to keep that facility up and running, make it better and make it better for those, those employees there. So I, I did want to focus that we are recommending some rate changes for our solid waste division, and I believe it will still make us competitive. What we don't want to do is run folks off and then not generate enough revenue to run it. So I, I think what we are offering is reasonable on that. I don't really have any additional information. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. You have a lot more information in your packet. I didn't see the need to go through every single slide, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the county manager? Herein then, we have two persons who have signed up to speak at this public hearing. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each, each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is School Board Chair Kathy Heintal.
I'm Kathy Heintal. I live in Union County. The chair, I'm the chair of the Union County Public Schools. I want to thank the commissioners and Mr. Matthews and county staff for working with our staff and our board. I also want to thank Dr. Hulan and Shauna McGlue. Our proposed budget will move UCPS in the right direction. The district compensation requests are necessary to ensure we remain competitive within the local and reg, region. As one of the highest performing school districts in North Carolina and the largest employer in Union County, we must continue to support programming and resources that prove to be effective. And that will further position our students and teachers to be successful. We are extremely proud of our teachers, principals, administrators, staff, and students. We appreciate their hard work. Our collective efforts have been extremely successful and are a true example of the dedication of Team UCPS and our stakeholders. The employees of UCPS are great, are the greatest resource we provide to our students, and supporting them is critical to the continued academic sex for students. The budget is broken down in four areas of focus: sustaining operations, investing in our employees, program expansion and new programs, investing in our future. I just want to say something that the state is still talking about, greater increases that is in our budget right now, so, that was planned for, so is, there is a potential for additional funding needed to meet any changes from the state. They're still talking about this. Yes. So next up is Mr. Seis, the chairs of the Finance Committee, and he will outlet the budget to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heintal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I also want to echo, echo those sentiments of Ms. Heintal, that the excellent, open and transparent relationship between the staffs and elected officials has been my best in 10 years in serving on this board. I just want to hit some of the budget highlights on our operating side. As, as you may know, approximately 4.5 million of increase in costs each year. And we mentioned charter schools, the payments, approximately 4.2 million. Not only do we make those payments, our finance staff is responsible for doing all the accounting, tracking down the attendance numbers, the headcounts, et cetera. So we have the overhead as well as passing through the funds. We also, as Ms. Heintal mentioned, we have locally funded employees. Our system could not operate if we just utilized the funds provided by the state based on a headcount of students for staffing needs. So we have locally funded employees that we have to match any benefit changes, any salary, pay increases by the state. And that is, this budget is based on the current information we have, which, as Ms. Heintal mentioned, could change. Frankly, I hope it does
Me, too.
in this, in this session, to the upside. We also have increased costs and things like utilities and insurance to put in there. So 4.5 million of our budget, right off the top, is just for increased costs over the previous year. This year in this budget, we are redirecting 4.4 million dollars' worth of funds, an unprecedented amount, in order to be able to increase local teacher supplements, approximately $1,150 per year. A down payment, I hope, but it is a start, as our state ranks woefully towards the bottom in teacher pay. Additional items in the budget of note, we have 1.5 million dollars for our exceptional children and English-language learner support. We are finding an increasing challenge of non-English-speaking parents and students showing up at our doorstep and expecting an education. And there is a significant cost to try and interpret through different services, what they're saying, what their needs are. I can tell you personally, I've heard at schools, they, they show up, they can't speak English, they have documents that aren't in English, and it's our job to educate them. We are also able to retain 1.5 million dollars for our highly successful tutoring program, started several years back by our superintendent. So those are just some of the highlights, and I appear to be out of time, so I will, I will yield. Thank you very much, and thank you again for fully funding the SROs.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak at this public Herein then, I will now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is item 24362, the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award. I will recognize Blake Hart, Management Director for this item.
Thank you, Chairman. We, our, our team, the GFOA stands for the Government Finance Officers Association, and that's the universal body that, that regulates and provides professional development over set opportunities for finance and budget efforts in local government around the world. And each year, there's an opportunity to submit our budget document for review, and it's a, it's a peer review over randomly selected judges that are also peers of ours around the country. And fortunately, we've been able to meet the criteria to receive this award for excellence for our budget document for the, this, I believe this is the eighth consecutive year. And each year, we looked at this recently, that over the past five years, our scores have increased each year, so we're very proud of that. And that is due to the excellent team that we have, and also the resources and, and opportunities that are provided by the board and by the county manager for our that are provided by the board and by the county manager for our staff to be able to work and continue to receive training and improve our software product that we use for the budget process. And we're just appreciative of you for that opportunity, and we wanted to share some of our successes for that. So, thank you.
I will recognize Julie Barum, Human Resources Director for this item.
Good evening, commissioners. Our second quarter service award ceremony was held in May, and this was recognizing about 28 recipients that we had meeting service award milestones in the months of April, May and June. In our current program, we begin recognition at five years of service and progress in increments of five years. And during this program in May, we recognized specifically 18 five-year recipients, seven 10-year recipients, two 20-year recipients and one 25-year recipient. So these ceremonies are special, not only to the employees, but they also build our culture of recognition and that connection between employees and their managers. We are happy to coordinate these ceremonies for our employees quarterly. And again, just want to express our congratulations and thanks to all of these recipients for their service, their dedication and their contributions to Union County. I also want to thank the public communications team for, again, assisting with video services and pictures to capture these recognition moments so they can be shared with coworkers, with family and with all of you. There is nothing that takes the place of hearing directly from employees about what their work and experience at Union County means to them and ultimately the organization and the community. I also want to thank Chairman Ralph for joining us at our last service award ceremony, and I hope that you all enjoy the video.
Thank you for joining us this morning for our service award ceremony. We are going to be celebrating milestones for folks in our second quarter, so these are folks that are meeting service award milestones in April, May and June.
Good morning, everybody. This is April. She's awesome.
That's all I have to say.
Casey is the employee that I got right.
All I can say is thank you, thank you for your service, but more importantly, thank you for doing it with a purpose and a passion behind it.
And I'm so thankful for her, and I hope I never have to come to work without her on the team. So, thank you very much.
We're so thankful for you, Donna, to work beside you, and you're such a person of impeccable character, and we just love you and thank you for your 25 years.
And I have been so blessed to have worked with Union County. We are family, we encourage each other, we're a team, and I'm just so grateful and I want to keep on going.
As far as I'm concerned, you know, Hung does a great job. I appreciate that we've had it for five years. I hope that you stay around for a lot longer. Thank you very much. Thank you, brother.
Peace to God that when I lay my head down tonight, I don't worry about them. I appreciate all you do for us.
I think when your peers recognize you, your profession recognizes you, and your team that you're leading is also being recognized. I mean, I don't know how to get a better leader than that. And we're so thankful to have you here, and congratulations on five years and hope you're here for a lot more. Thank you.
I'm from the county, has great benefits and holidays, but it is a family here, and a lot of the units are small and they're very close, so I definitely feel like it could be for anybody starting out a long-term goal, a career somewhere that, you know, I plan to retire from, and hopefully they will too.
So Cindy, I just want to tell you to keep on rocking on.
Thank you.
Union County, I don't speak for myself, but I'll speak for Union County. We are so blessed to have someone of his magnitude serving our citizens, and I am even more blessed to call him my friend.
And I thoroughly enjoy it. It's a great, great place to work. If somebody was wondering why for, for local government, and especially talking with, with what I do with the association, talking to people that work in other places, we've got probably the best place to work.
I'm so glad you're part of elections. So thank you on behalf of all of those people. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for being part of our team, and I hope you're here for many, many more years to come.
Being in HR, I'm able to see and touch a lot of departments. However, some departments only get to touch and see their own department. So when we have these quarterly awards, it's an opportunity for folks who work in elections to meet and mingle with folks from tax or to meet and mingle with folks from HR or other departments and learn a little bit more about what they do. So it's an opportunity for us to see as a whole how we grow and support our community, which has been great.
And it's my privilege to work with you, and I hope you continue for a long time. You rock and rave, and you rock back.
Congratulations to you for 20 years, and thank you for everything that you do.
People are everything. And it's not, it's not so much about the tax work as it is relationships. It's a, it takes a special group to do what we do. I think it really is the people that, that make it worth coming to work every day.
I want to, first off, want to recognize our Chairman J.R. Ralph for attending these back in the back. It is not often that we have board members come to these, and it's really important that he came. He can hear the stories that you have, because it's amazing, the things that you do, the rapport you've built with your coworkers. And I say this every time, you all are what make this a great place to work. Our employees are really what build this into a great organization, and I'm just so proud to have you part of this organization, and I hope you all continue to work for many, many more years. Thank you very much.
That's a lot of years of experience. I think that deserves a standing ovation. Thank you so much to the people who got the awards. Like I said, that's, that's a, that was a great award ceremony. I'm going to go to the next one, too. I hope I had more fun there than I think anybody did. It was such a positive and uplifting ceremony, and, you know, our employees are our most precious resource. We say that sometime, but, but that's true. Without them, none of the county's work is going to get done. Next on the agenda is consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. Are there any revisions requested to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicated by I? Also, any, any consideration of the business agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table the last business item, I believe it is. Bear with me one second here. That would be a portion of item 24380, and that's appointments to boards and committees. I would like to table the appointments for item number four, which is the Union County Land Use Board appointments to be discussed at our next meeting, which would be June 17th. And I would also like to include in this motion that we extend the application period until that time.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicated by I? Any motion on the business agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we adopt the business agenda as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor on the business agenda, other business agenda as amended, indicated by We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24386, Other Post-Employment Benefit Options. I will recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So previously, we had a discussion with the board about the possibility or opportunity to consider reinstating the employment benefit for retirees that we previously had in place, and this was a health insurance benefit as well as possible consideration of a special assessment. The board asked for some possible additional information. What we could not give you at that time, and we, we still cannot give you that information as far as what is the total liability, but in order to calculate the total liability, we would have to have an actuary do that, do that study. We have discussed this with the, an actuary. They could do that work for $6,000. At that time, if the board is interested in doing the study, we would bring back to you the results of that. If the board wanted to move forward with some consideration of a retirement benefit, it would not go into effect until the 2026 budget. But what we're asking tonight is, is there any interest from the board in completing the study and bringing the liability information to you related to that retirement benefit?
Mr. County Manager, I think this is one of the most important benefits that we could give our employees. The way it is now, that benefit was stopped in 2013, so we have some employees that have those benefits and we have some that don't. So you've got, in some cases, you've got people doing the same job, but they don't have the same benefits. I was reading the class and compensation study over the weekend, and it also recommended that we might want to reconsider the elimination of that benefit because it's, I can't stress enough, I think, how important it is as a recruiting tool and a retention tool especially. You know, when you're 23 years old, it's not that important. When you're 53, it's really important, and eventually, you're going to get there. I saw also in the compensation study that 46% of our workforce is currently has four years or less. Well, we have got to target those people somehow and hold on to those people because we don't want them to leave and go to Mecklenburg County or go to the private sector. No, maybe we can't pay them what Mecklenburg County can pay them, but we can offer them things that Mecklenburg County does not offer them. To me, this is very, very important, and it's something I want to see this board do eventually. Now, it's not cheap, I understand that. I'm in favor of doing this study and getting the actuary to give us some numbers and moving forward with this. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I believe I would be in favor of the study. I believe that, well, we're not going to know unless we do the study, you know, what our total liabilities are going to be. So, so at this point, I would also be in favor of at least performing the study at this time.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams?
I'm not opposed to, you know, spending $6,000 for an actuarial study, but, you know, I'll kind of echo what I've said before on this issue, which is, you know, we're operating within some pretty significant revenue constraints, and I don't see those changing for a good while. And, you know, a lot of these benefits and these post-employee benefits are, are ones that over time have kind of diminished in, in a broader sense. And, you know, we're about to, it looks like, implement a portion of this salary study that we did, this compensation study that we did. So I don't think now is the time, you know, to look at possibly expanding post-employee benefits when we've got all these other demands on the county's recurring revenues, and we're about to embark on implementation of, you know, the elements of this compensation study. So, you know, I would just say that I'm not real, you know, real hot on increasing these kind of benefits. I just don't think financially it's wise for the county.
Any further discussion? And I would say, I certainly understand, we, we cannot do that this year and maybe not next year, but I think we can prepare ahead of time and maybe do this eventually. I mean, we provided these benefits for employees for many years, and then all of a sudden, they, they stopped. Well, at that time, we didn't have recruiting issues and retention issues. Things, of course, have changed, so it's just something I think that would be a good thing to take a look at and maybe prepare for it a little as we go along, and then hopefully implement either the policy that we had in the past or some reasonable facsimile of that. Any help, I think, that you give employees is good help. Commissioner Merrick?
Yes, I have the same concerns that Commissioner Williams has, and I absolutely hear what, what you're saying as well. I just want to confirm, if this, if this stopped in 2013, is the plan to be retro to 2013 or going forward?
No, ma'am, it would actually be going forward. And that's the other thing, that there's a lot of ways to do this. You can go back to the way we used to calculate it, which is, you know, you had certain member of years of service. You can, you can expand it and require more years of service. There's, there's a lot of different ways to offer it if the board wants to offer it, but no, we would not go back necessarily. It would really be based on years of service.
But if, if you don't go back and include those people who started after 2013, you're going to have, surely, we're not going to say, all right, if you worked from 2013 to 2026, you don't get it, but if you started after 2026, you get it because you'll have people quitting for a day and then coming back to work so they can get it.
Right, so, and I, it, it, years, years of service is what you base it on. So it's certainly if someone started here in 2013, and if you establish that, let's just use 15 years as a threshold, then, you know, in 2028, you would have 15 years of service and you would qualify for that, that employment benefit at that time. So it's not so much retroactive, it's just how many years of service you have.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Chair, Chairman?
Question, Brian, question for you then. So, but ultimately, we're not going to know what our options are until we have the study performed.
Absolutely.
And I think that, you know, you got to take one, one step at a time here. So, yes, this may be something that would be extremely, you know, costly to the county, but my hope is, is that, you know, if we at least get consensus on performing the study, that we can look at the options afforded to us and then make some sort of decision that would be financially responsible as well as, you know, potentially something that we can implement for ours, for our employees.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, last thing I'll say, I mean, I think, you know, information's, you know, more information is good, but I'll just note that, you know, we're, it appears we're going to be making a decision to take an OPEB holiday in our funding for the next fiscal year. So these are the kind of, you know, revenue constraints that we always have to wrestle with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to allot the money for the study, for the OPEB study, indicate by aye. All opposed. The next matter of business is item 24-307, task force or task order related to Agricultural Services Center for Simpson Event Center Support Building. I'll recognize Chris Boyd, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, concerning this audit.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this item is for the board to consider approval of a design contract for the Simpson Events Center Support Building. It's also gives me an opportunity to share a little more detail about the project as you're trying to work through your decision-making process. So all of you are aware, we opened the Simpson Events Center in 2022, so it's proven to be a widely successful facility, supporting a variety, a large variety of different types of events. In order for those events to be successful, staff has realized the need for a significant investment in equipment, different apparatus, a lot of different things. Staff has indicated, they estimate approximately a half a million dollars' worth of assets have been invested in for support of events at that facility. Right now, some of the justification for the building is that right now, all that equipment's either being stored outdoors in the weather, and the object of this project is to get that under roof, out of the weather, and try to extend the life cycle of some of that equipment. Also, the staff doesn't have a place to work on some of that equipment, do some maintenance and repairs. So this project, just to remind you, this project was previously included as part of the facility CIP, and basically, we had a total budget of $882,460. A little bit about the scope of the project. The building's planned to be approximately 4,500 square feet. It's going to include both open air and enclosed storage and shop space, to be located immediately adjacent to, just to the south of the existing Simpson Events Center. The plan is for it to be a clear-span, pre-engineered steel building, similar to the event center, with six-inch reinforced concrete flooring. The enclosed portions plan to have some HVAC, be a shop space, so it would need to have some temperature control. Certainly going to be a corrosion-protected building, and we anticipate, you know, we talked about life expectancy of buildings, this building will be a 100-year facility once built. Pretty easy to maintain a steel structure, though. To show you a little bit about the site, so the first picture on the left is looking at the proposed site. The camera's kind of looking towards where the site would be, towards the north to the Simpson Events Center. The image on the right is looking from the Simpson Events Center to where the site is. You can see the little gravel driveway that goes up just a little bit. It would be right in that location. And that location offers a lot of benefits from an efficiency standpoint. When you, and I've got some images of some of the equipment, and you'll kind of understand what I mean there. So these are some of those images. The one on the left, based on our motorized equipment, that is undercover, but that cover is actually our livestock washing station. So anytime there's a livestock event, all that equipment's got to be moved and relocated, then once that event's over, moved back. The next image is of our pins and gates, just some of the pins and gates on that site. Some of those gates weigh 600 pounds. You can kind of see that they're stored outside, they're on the ground. Staff has to still band those every time they close up shop on an event. It does present some challenges from a safety perspective. Just to the end of that photo is a bank of restrooms for the public. The public has access around those, all those stored gates, so being able to put those a little away from the event center and in a secure location makes a lot of sense. The next image over is just an additional set of pins, you know, that are used for livestock events. And then the far-right image is just some other implements and other support equipment. These aren't all the pictures of all the equipment, you know, that need to be stored in this facility, but there are some of those. I want to talk a little bit about the cost estimate details. So the major portion of it is the metal building costs, and this is how we build, you know, all our project budgets. The metal building costs, we're holding $630,000 towards that. That's at $140 a square foot. So the basis of that cost was the cost of the Simpson Events Center, which is going to be a similar construction, escalated from 2020, when we basically bid that up to the midpoint of construction, which is, we figure 12/20, December 2025. The next item, site work, $98,900. So because this is a commercial, public-use facility, we are going to have to meet stormwater requirements. That means a couple of things. One is temporary erosion control, and then a permanent stormwater device is another requirement there. I want to point out, too, that where the current site is now, we're looking at it to be a cut site, which means we're going to have to remove dirt, better than a field site, but still, it's going to cost a little bit to move dirt. The next item is associated construction costs, $51,356. So those are things that we, most of the time, procure outside of the construction contracts, so that's some IT work. And you're asking, well, why would you need IT in a storage building, probably? Well, you know, right now, our phone system is voice-over IP, so you've got to get data lines, you know, over to that, and that's what, we're just carrying a small amount there. Anytime you're building a steel structure, you're going to need special inspections. Of course, we're going to have concretes, we're going to have proof roll and do some things like that, so material testing is important. There is some specialty equipment that we're allocating in the budget. That's really storage racks predominantly. And then we've got some for security, which is cameras, potentially a one-card, if there's an enclosed portion that we want to maintain some really secure space. There's also a little bit of pre-construction expenses, so that's like the survey, bid advertisement, and permit fees. Then we've got design fees. Right now, we normally budget between 8% to 10% of construction costs for our design contracts. This one, we budgeted 9%, and you'll see in this request, it's $66,800, so we're like at 8.8%. And it'll be full design services, including construction administration. And then we hold contingency on every project, typically running 3% of building and site costs. So the total project budget's $879,504. So if the board wanted to move forward, you know, we do have some options and opportunities for potential savings. The first is, the market conditions are, you know, they remain volatile, but we may be in a better place, and I've got some feedback that the metal building industry, you know, we may be in a more favorable position on bid day, which is about 12 months from now. So we may see some savings on the metal building. We could look at building type, move from a clear span to vertical supporting columns and posts, that will save some money. We could also look to reduce or remove enclosed space, because anytime you enclose a space, you've got to do a lot of different things there. We could look at some HVAC reduction, you know, instead of going full conditioned space, we could go minimal heating only. We could look to non-insulate some of the enclosed space or reduce the R-value of some of that insulation. We could look at the site construction, we could locate the building in a more neutral cut fill location. There may be some downsides to that, so we'd have to look at that during design. Then we could reduce some of the other costs, which is basically removing specialty storage equipment, some of the IT stuff, and the security allowance. So I wanted, you know, so we do have an action for you to look at this. I want you to understand that if you don't approve this, it's, we can always, it's in a capital account, it can sit, if this is not the right time for this project, it can sit, you know, in that capital account potentially until there is a right time, or the funds can be reallocated for another project, if that's something that the board wants to do. But I want you to know that if we don't do the project, and you don't want to move forward right now, we can either retain the money, defer it, or reallocate it to another project if you're not interested at this time. So I'll open it up for questions if you've got questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
First of all, Chris, thank you, appreciate the presentation. You know, I actually wrote out there, Commissioner Balkman and I wrote out there, and we took a look at, you know, the site and where this structure would be, and tried to get a better understanding, you know, of the need. And first, let me say this, that the folks that work out there, you know, credit to those guys because they really take care of what they've been afforded, and that's evident, you know, anytime that you go out there to that facility. You know, for this item here, it's kind of a tough one, honestly, for me, because I look back at, you know, how we kind of got the Simpson Events Center to begin with, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, this was an item that was originally put on bond referendum, and then that bond referendum failed. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then, you know, the previous board, or a previous board, I should say, decided they were going to, you know, fund this project with, I'm only assuming, you know, general fund, or, is that correct? Also, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, it was a general county fund balance.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. And so, you know, what I'm struggling with here is, is that, you know, we do have a lot of other needs. We have, you know, so many other pressing needs, and we are, well, to our county manager's point, we're having to get very creative with our budget right now. And so, when I look at something like this, I want to see, you know, what's our ROI? And as I understand it, you know, we're not really bringing in a profit here with this event center. It's not something that we're getting a return on our investment with at this point. Now, I don't want to underscore, or, how can I put this? I don't want to minimize the need, all right, because I understand, after having seen it, but I'm of the opinion that with the other needs that we have in the county, that for right now, it would be a no. I would be more inclined to look at this perhaps in another year, but for me at least, it would be a no for right now.
And Mr. County Manager, is the ask for $66,800 for the time being, and that money is in the budget, is that correct?
It's actually for the-
Yeah. Commissioner, that's right. This is just for the design contract portion, which is $66,800, and there's funds already allocated for that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Balkman.
Yes, I'd like to echo Commissioner Helm's statement on the staff. The staff really seem to take pride in their work. They take ownership of the job, and it looks nice. You know, you can just tell that they're trying to do the job to the best of their ability. My question, and being on this board, a fairly recent member of this board, we've got so much coming at us from so many different directions. I do think maybe, as you say, this just may not be the right time. I see the need coming forward, but most of the cattle panel, well, most of that stuff's intended to be outside anyway, it's cattle panels, that sort of thing. Perhaps it's just not the right time would be my position.
Another question, Mr. Board, is that, is the total budget for the project, has it been budgeted also?
It has.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Mayor. So I just want to agree with both Commissioners already. Chris, you know, great job. I just want to confirm, most of this is for storage of equipment that is made to be outside, but maybe we don't want, it would last longer if it was under roof.
Yeah, a portion of the equipment's meant for outside, some of it's not meant for outside, and that's the stuff you see that's covered, undercover now, and I'm going to say little cubby holes and other places that weren't designed for it. So there's a combination of both types of equipment.
So I just, I kind of get, like, if we're trying to weigh, like, the priorities of, you know, everybody's needs in this particular budget, this one would be very low for me. And I do remember when this failed on the ballot, and the voters said they did not want to build this facility, but prior leadership built it anyway, said they found the money. I wish we could find the money today.
I understand.
Because there are a lot of needs. So I just want to thank you. I understand, you know, what you're asking for. I just think it's a really bad market, maybe not a good time, so maybe in a year or two, we could revisit this. But I think that's why we should absolutely heed caution when the voters say they don't want something, they don't want to pay for something, but, you know, five or 10 people, you know, find millions of dollars and build it anyway, because here we are two years later, and now this facility needs more. So for me, it, I just don't see how we can do it right now.
And Mr. County Manager, what will happen to these funds that are already budgeted for this event, if it's not approved, or for this item, if it's not approved?
Certainly, and as Mr. Boyd indicated, those funds can sit for a period of time, obviously. They could be redirected, or they could actually be used to pay down some of the debt that we have for the county. So there's sort of three options here. And obviously, you can't sit on those funds forever, but certainly, you could wait some period of time, or redirect, or use them to pay down debt. Those are the three options.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add on to that, this was a two-thirds bond project, so it is a restricted bond for this project or like projects. So we would have to talk with Beverly to see if these funds can be allocated to another project or not. If not, probably the only use would be to pay the debt service associated with those two-thirds bonds. We can see how long we can hold on those, but they do want us to spend them down or repay the debt, so we just have to figure that out if we do want to take a pause on this.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we deny item 24-307 regarding the architectural services for the Simpson Events Center Support Building at this time, and also request from staff an update on the options and the terms, you know, for the allocated, or I should say, the budgeted amount for this item at a future meeting.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Dave.
Thank you, all.
Next on the agenda is item 24-330, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Pedestrian Map Amendment. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner, for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. As a reminder, comprehensive transportation plans are required in North Carolina across all parts of the state. all parts of the state. The areas that are affected by this amendment are covered by the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, CARTPO, so they would ultimately be the ones that would approve the amendment. But the NCDOT Board of Transportation is a dual approval body for this. We use the comprehensive transportation plan every day to provide feedback to the NCDOT and to people looking to develop their property along roads or new roads throughout the county. It also impacts rail, pedestrian, bicycle transit. Again, it doesn't include intersection scale improvements, that's why we have our Critical Intersection Program. The pedestrian map portion of the comprehensive transportation plan is used in our UDO. When a property owner wants to develop their property in the unincorporated portions of the county, we make sidewalk requirements based on this map. It's been in effect for a little less than a year. Previously, we had a plan that had been approved about 10 years ago, and things had changed, and this is a more flexible document that includes the input of the municipality, so we thought this was the right way to go. I will note that there were some gaps that we identified, and so in implementing this, we identified some, some areas where some additional sidewalk requirements would be consistent with what municipalities plan in their areas, but there's also some, some portions of the CTP that years ago, when this was developed, made sense, but based on our current comprehensive plan, those areas are not going to grow in an urban manner, so sidewalk requirements don't make a lot of sense. This did go to the Land Use Board, and they recommended these changes last month. So the first map, you see all these dashed lines, these are for recommendations, some areas are solid lines, like Providence Road through Weddington, means there's already sidewalks there, they don't need to be improved. What we noticed is there are some missing segments along Waxaw-Marvin Road, Crane Road, Bonds Grove, Billy Howie, 218, coming out from Mecklenburg County. We also saw some areas that didn't make a lot of sense, and those were south of 75, like Rocky River, Fletcher Broom, Plyler Mill, and Doster. Previously, those areas were recommended for more suburban development, they also had plans in our utility maps for sewer extensions, that made sense. You took away your, the plans for utilities in the future there. Our land use plan was revised to make that rural, so we would recommend removing those areas from sidewalk requirements. The proposed map looks like this, the red areas are the deletions, and the green areas are the additions. The green areas are over here, between Marvin and Waxaw, and as well as a portion up here, coming from Mint Hill to Union County, and then a short portion that actually would connect some existing sidewalks further south on Billy Howie Road, so we thought that made sense as well. Waxaw and Marvin have both in past resolutions supporting these changes, and the other municipalities were consulted, and they were fine with the existing sidewalk network, so we weren't making or not making connections that would be inconsistent with what they would want. The outreach process for the public, 30-day public comment period would occur later this summer. We would always have a robust social media outreach process, as well as through the Union County Newsletter. We would send out direct mailing to all the affected property owners along these corridors, be several hundred parcels. There would be public comments afforded during all board meetings, when this is being considered later in the summer. And then Marvin and Waxaw would have their own outreach processes as well. The timeline is right now, the resolutions, we've already received them from the municipalities, and we're requesting this from you. In July, this would go to CARTPO, where Vice Chairman Helm's would receive this information for information, and in August, be asked to vote to authorize the opening of this comment period. We would then conduct it from August to September, and then in late September, digest the results and make a recommendation. Maybe the results are favorable, maybe they're not. And then process them, if things are working smoothly, they would go to CARTPO in November for information, and then, and then action in December. So at that point, our work is done. So the action that's requested of you tonight is to approve the resolution, requesting CARTPO open this public comment period for these changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
I move that this board adopt the attached resolution requesting the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, otherwise known as CARTPO, open a public comment period for the proposed amendment.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Vice Chairman Helm?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I'll be supporting the motion. Bjorn, thank you very much for the presentation. I mean, based off of the plan that you showed us, I mean, I think this is kind of a no-brainer, I think it makes sense that we amend this and kind of make that requirement on the western end, especially Waxaw-Marvin areas, so, yeah, I'll be in, I'll be in support. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next matter of business is item 24-355, appointments to the Consolidated Human Services Board. The positions on this board have been advertised, applications were received and initially reviewed by the Consolidated Human Services Board, and the board has provided its recommendations for appointments and the information for this item agenda. Are there any nominations to fill these open positions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. So I would like to nominate the following. So for the position of other person, I'd like to nominate Susan Marsiniak for the position of physician. I'd like to nominate Dr. Craig Kalash for the position of registered nurse, Ms. Jill James, and then for the position of social worker, I'd like to nominate Dr. Wendy Sellers, and that would be my motion, sir.
Okay, I think there-
Are there other recommendations as well?
Yeah, just for clarification, I'll restate the motion. So I'll make the motion that, that we appoint the following folks here, and that would be Susan Marsiniak for the role of other person, Dr. Craig Kalash for the role of physician, Ms. Jill James for the role of registered nurse, and then Dr. Wendy Sellers for the role of social worker. And that should at least take care of the current, you know, applicants with the positions that we have.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One position to be filled is an expiring term on the Partners Health Management Board of Directors for a Commissioner or Commissioner-designee position currently held by Commissioner Williams, who has indicated by, who has indicated his willingness to continue serving on this board. The remaining positions to be filled on other boards and committees have been advertised. In accordance with the Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedures, applications have been received, and information regarding the vacant positions may be found in the background provided for this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I suppose we can take these one by one then. I'll make the motion that, that we appoint Commissioner Williams to serve on the Partners Health Management Board of Directors for an additional three-year term.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Helm?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item number two here, that would be the South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. I'll make the motion that we appoint Jerry Simpson to fill that position.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this would be the last one for tonight, and that would be item number three, which was the City of Monroe's Planning Board, that is the ETJ representative, and I'll make the motion to appoint Pamela Duda to that position.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
It is now time for comments from the county manager.
So I just want to say again, thank you for all the work the staff put into for our budget. I want to say thank you to the board for your input, for your willingness to go through this, and we've had a number of meetings, I appreciate your patience and your understanding in going through that, it's a lot of information, but I thought that overall, the process went very well, and I just want to say thank you and have a good night.
Commissioner Clancy Balk.
I would just like to say thank you for the patience for other Commissioners, for the staff, as I try to learn and grow into this position. I feel like I'm sort of a slow learner at times, but I appreciate the patience. Encourage everybody to be safe on the way home.
Commissioner David Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similarly, I'd like to thank staff for all the hard work that's gone into preparing for the next fiscal year. I know it's a heavy lift, and it never really ends, you're always somewhere along that, you know, fiscal year planning cycle, so thank you for all the work that you do. And I'd just like to, you know, thank the citizens who spoke today in informal comments and in the public hearing.
Commissioner Melissa Merrill.
Commissioner Helm's and I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Chafin out at Kane Creek Park, and we had a wonderful day out there right before the Memorial Day rush, and we had a lot of fun. They're actually doing a really great job storing equipment and everything, I was very impressed with how they were managing to take care of things out there on a slim budget. So I just want to thank him and his staff, everyone at Parks and Rec, for showing us around, and I hope they had a good and safe Memorial Day, and I can't wait to go back again, I'm ready to go back to Kane Creek. But, and I want to thank staff, especially Beverly, and, and the county manager, Blake, anytime we've had questions over the last month or two with budget and everything, you've been extremely helpful in getting to tonight, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chairman Helm?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would just, I would agree with Commissioner Merrill, you know, our Parks and Recs folks, they do a great job. Spending time out in Kane Creek with Jim was, it was a good time, and certainly took me back to the times that I spent as a child out at Kane Creek, so got to relive my youth a little bit. So, so if you ever get the opportunity, spend some time out there, probably not during Memorial Day weekend, but I would certainly recommend it. We do have a great resource out there, as well as other, you know, parks we have here in the county too, but certainly Kane Creek is, is special. For all the speakers that we had tonight, thank you for your participation. I'd like to specifically thank Mayor David Cohn for being here tonight, for, you know, bringing up the Morris Park issue. You know, I mentioned this, I had a discussion via voicemail with David earlier, we were trading some messages back and forth, but I'm optimistic that in time, we can find a solution there for the citizens of Morris Park. For our UCPS folks, our School Board, Board of Education folks, Chairperson Kathy Heintal was here, as well as Gary Sigh, Sarah May, thank you, folks, for being here. I certainly appreciate the partnership that we have with our Board of Education. You guys do a fantastic job, and I'm proud to have that partnership with you. For our staff, our county manager, Blake, Beverly, everyone involved with, with our budget, all the hard work that you guys have put into it doesn't go unnoticed. You know, you guys have a lot on your plate, and we certainly appreciate, you know, all of your efforts, as well as all of our staff, and I would just say that, you know, in watching the Service Award presentation this evening, it kind of reminded me of when I attended too, and, and it's fantastic to see those things, it's fantastic to attend those, those Service Award meetings, because the storytelling is just great. I mean, you get to, you get to hear all these stories about, you know, how these folks met, or, you know, different things that have happened in their career, and it just reminds you that we do have a very family-oriented atmosphere here in Union County, and it's one to be, one to be very proud of, and it starts with, with the great folks that we have. So I'd like to thank all of, all of you, all of our employees, and all of our staff, thank you very much.
And thanks to all the people who put the budget together, my notebook was only 450 pages, so I had some really good reading over the weekend, but I can't thank you enough, Mr. County Manager, and all the people that were recognized on the slide, I mean, it really, really takes a lot of people to put all that, that stuff together. I really don't know how you do it, but thank you so much. Thanks to all the county employees for the great job you always do, thanks to law enforcement and EMS and fire, 911 telecommunications, thanks to my colleagues on the board for all they do. And Dr. Forrest, good to see you tonight, ma'am. And I will take a motion, or I'll entertain a motion, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes.